Good evening. Call to order the regular meeting of the Board of Education for July 28, 2021. Will everyone please rise for the pledge of the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Tauber is not with us this evening. She's joining us remotely. She is located at 22 Ford Court in Monroe, New York. So she will be joining us via online with Mr. Vias. Also, Mr. Cahill is out this evening, so he will not be joining us. A reading of our mission statement. We are committed to academic achievement and success for all students in a safe environment. In partnership with families and our community, our mission is to promote confidence, inspire a passion for learning, and to prepare our students to become responsible global citizens. May I have a motion to approve the revised agenda?
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Questions and comments this evening from interested citizens? We do have a few. I will just remind everyone to go ahead and come up to the podium. You're entitled to three minutes to speak. We will not respond to what you're stating tonight. However, at our next meeting, which I believe is August 25th, is when you will get a response. So let's start with Janet Steltz, who will be speaking about critical race theory.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you. So I don't have a lot of time, so I'm going to jump into it. Critical race theory, not doing too well in a lot of areas across the country. And the bottom line is that critical race theory is about division and tearing apart. It teaches racism and demands discrimination based on a false narrative pushed by those who capitalize on conjuring up negative emotions, triggering mental illness, and self-loathing, using psychological grooming techniques such as trauma-informed culturally responsive training, more like trauma-induced. By design, it serves as a Trojan horse to usher in Marxist ideology, using communist propaganda in language, books, media, and culture. They claim they are so oppressed by an inherently racist, capitalist, irredeemable, white America. It reminds me of what Hitler said about the Jews, and we know how that turned out. They don't want to eradicate racism because they revel in it. They deliberately vilify an entire group of people based on their skin color, hurling false, generalized accusations in a sadistic attempt to justify their own racist and tyrannical behavior. They're anti-God, anti-nuclear family, and anti-American. My question to you is why? What does it solve? How does it help our children learn? How does it improve our eighth graders, whose reading proficiency is currently at 29%? How does it prepare our children for personal responsibility, the workforce, financial literacy? Does it teach them to value human life or respect each other, or encourage hard work or build character? The propaganda that is being woven into school culture, I realize, listen, there are some wonderful teachers, and I know a lot of you are really good people working hard for a lot of things, so please know this is not a blanket accusation here. But there are books assigned, student clubs, and third-party organizations, and yes, I'm talking about eye-opening enterprises, who are pushing this stuff from various angles. It makes me wonder why we don't ever see any conservative speakers, student club opportunities, or classical literature at M W anymore, and certainly nothing for faith-based or students who are of faith. While we do have some wonderful teachers, as I said, we have some radical activists pushing communist propaganda in the classroom. For example, here you see an example of a reading and writing assignment given to my daughter's ELA class, where they were told to choose from one of these books, and they are Marxist books. Okay, I read through them, and to write a children's story based on what they read, and then shared it with first graders at Smith Clove. This is an activist. She's not teaching legitimate academia. She's breeding soldiers for Antifa. This is not an isolated incident. She's exploiting our high school children and using them to indoctrinate first graders. I don't take this lightly. I want something done about this. Please. Please tell me you don't condone this. We all believe that there are issues that need to be discussed, that need resolution, solutions, not reveling in the pain and living there and staying there.
Thank you. That was time.
Thank you. Actually, just one last sentence, please. Could I just? So please tell your teachers to stop teaching things that teach them to hate God, hate their parents, hate the police, hate America, our flag and our national anthem, and each other. Children should learn that they're all made in the image and likeness of God. Do you really want this happening on your watch? I don't think you do. Remember Hitler, Stalin, and Mao? This is how they started education, and there's no such thing as a little bit of communism. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker, and forgive me if I mispronounce your name, Anthony Letinozitz.
Okay, Anthony.
Anthony?
Lefundowitz?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, I'm sorry. Thank you. I apologize.
Okay. In the prison system, when I used to work for the last 15 years, they used to call me Mr. L.
Okay.
It was never a problem.
Mr. L. Much easier for me.
If you pronounce my name correctly or ask for Mr. L.
Okay. Go ahead, sir. You have three minutes.
Okay. Very brief. Just want to tell about my background. Okay, I was born in communist Poland. I was educated in communist Poland, went to elementary, communist school, high school, college. I got my degree in history. I was a history teacher in Poland. Then, 40 years ago, I defected to the United States. Again, it was not just sneaking through the border, but this was a risking vault. It was defection. And in Poland, of course, I got my master's degree in history and was teaching history. Actually, this is my hobby. In the U.S., I got my master's degree at the Drexel University in flimsy science and business administration. Regarding my educational and professional background, I was a teacher in Poland. I was also a teacher here in the U.S. I was a religion teacher in Catholic school. I'm also currently a teacher of Polish language at the Polish Language School in Monroev Secret Park Parish. So I have basically a good understanding of educational system in communist country and in the United States of America. I chose the country because, yeah, this country, because, yeah, I knew that I would have freedom of expression and freedom to raise the family the way I wanted in Christian values. Yeah, because my, I remember my parents being persecuted, my grandparents being persecuted by communist system, fighting, and again, many of members of my family were basically killed or imprisoned. My issue with the race relations, okay, you focus on two groups who are the victims of prejudice and racism. I would say, I guess there are some teachers here. I would like to ask a quick question. What's the origin of word slave? Probably nobody knows.
Slav.
Very good. Oh, yes. Actually, since I'm Polish, I'm a Slav, as you heard about Slavic tribes, okay? The slave comes, origin comes from the Slav. During Roman Empire, millions of Slavic people were brought to Roman Empire to become slaves. And because there was, there were so many millions of Slavs, again, Poles, Russians, Ukrainians, whatever. The Slav became Latin word slavus, for slave, and this is the origin of this word. Okay, so that's something, yeah, we focus on black slavery, which I understand, yeah, that's an issue, but, yeah, you're forgetting the roots of the slavery. You really don't teach, because, yeah, I'm comparing the textbooks, and I'm interested in what they teach in different schools. You're forgetting about the whole picture.
Excuse me? I'm sorry. I don't want to be disrespectful, but the time has rung, so I don't know if there's a last thought that you'd like to give, but your three minutes has expired.
Regarding World War II, you're talking about Jewish Holocaust. Over 40 million of Slavs were slaughtered during World War II. Altogether, 60 million people died during World War II. Out of this number, 6 million Jews, so it's 10%. Okay, Slavs were between 30, 40 million people. How much history time teachers spent on teaching about the slaughter and murder of the Slavic people? Because Hitler and Nazi system wanted to basically totally destroy the Slavs, erase which was basically subhuman, okay?
I'm going to encourage you at this point that if you have anything further, you can send us an email or reach out to the superintendent. Our emails are all on the website, but for the sake of time and policy that we have quite a few others that are going to speak.
The curriculum and the textbooks, they don't mention these things. And, yeah, I feel it's really a disservice to the past generations, to the martyrs of the World War II, again, the slavery I mentioned to you that, yeah.
If there's something specific, feel free to put it in an email to us, and somebody will definitely get back to you.
Appreciate it.
Okay? Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Okay, thank you.
The next speaker is Sarah Rugier, also on critical race theory. Oh, excuse me.
That's okay. Everyone gets it wrong. It's no problem. I just want to start off by saying, I actually went to Monroe Woodbury, and I love this school district, so, so all you know. So let me start off by saying that I do believe that racial injustice and racism is a true and real concern. I want that to be clear so that we can come to an understanding that where we differ is in the way we should address it. As a Catholic, I think it's important also to mention that Jesus's physical appearance was never mentioned in the Gospels. Why? Because it's irrelevant. I don't like the idea of putting people into tiny boxes and categories. How will this be beneficial in fighting racism? The concept that a colorblind education system will do nothing to prevent racial injustices is false. If anything, our children should be raised up in a system where their race and sex is considered simply their bio, sorry, their biology, and has nothing to do with how we should be treated. This would go further in helping people to teach children to be more considerate and inclusive. But by saying that because a child is of a certain race or sex, they are either oppressed or the oppressor, we are creating a turn and antagonism between the two children before a relationship has ever even occurred. We are making these relationships more challenging to start, and in turn, are creating a divisive environment for them to try and socialize in, not to mention the harmful impact this will have on the way they view themselves. Critical race theory is just that, a theory. There is no evidence to prove that this theory will actually have a good impact on the way our children think. Where, sorry, where can you show evidence that this type of theory was used in a school district and had a beneficial impact on preventing racism? Deacon Harold Burke Sivers, author of Behold the Man, stated that once he began looking into critical race theory, he found that most of the ideas in critical race theory stemmed from critical legal theory in the 1980s, which was primarily stemmed out of Marxist political philosophy. While I think it's safe to say that at any other time in history that Marxist ideas were accepted and taught, it thus followed by ushering in terrifying communist dictatorships and consequent murder of millions of people, all under the guise of the greater good. I think this is a dangerous school of thought. While I respect the right to share these ideas with children, that is, as long as they are being presented as ideas and not fact, I also believe wholeheartedly in the necessity to share the conservative alternatives. There are two sides, sometimes more, to everything. And in order for our children to become well-rounded citizens, we need to ensure that they are being taught all sides of the issues. I understand that there are teachers' unions members, such as Randy Weingarten, who state that you should fight back, fight parents about what should be taught in schools, quote unquote. So unfortunately, that leaves us with no other choice than to fight back. We parents hope that Monroe Woodbury will hear us out and allow for more conservative clubs, discussions, and speakers to ensure our kids are being shaped into balanced, critical thinkers. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. The next speakers are Jeff and Claudia Cortez, and they are speaking about eye-opening enterprises.
The very important question that I would like to ask Superintendent Rodriguez and the rest of the board, I've known some of you for many years, and I know the hard work that's done here in our schools. I know that our teachers work very hard, that everybody is trying their best. I understand that. But in light of the question of what evidence do you have, and what accountability will there be to show that hiring eye-opening enterprises and implementing their program to our entire K through 12 district at the cost of thousands of dollars to the taxpayer, how will this affect a so-called "culture of love and acceptance" to make more productive learners of our kids? Are we going to have access to actual data? Are the students going to be able to have yearly reviews of the program and get feedback or give you feedback? We've been parents in this district for 20 years. We have three children that have completed K through 12 and graduated over this time. I can remember when you were administrator at the middle school when my son was there. And so we've, you know, we've been here a while. We've been around the block, and now this is our fourth child. And we've never in all these years felt the need to come and speak before you. Obviously, we're very disturbed about the issues that are coming to the board, that are being approved by the board, and one of them is this eye learning. We've seen tons of money over the years that we've been parents spent on trying to create an environment of healthy relationships and social emotional learning. Monroe Woodbury, as you know, has had poster contests, kindness awards, special speaker assemblies, multicultural and diversity events, acceptance and inclusion clubs, student reps, Monroe Woodbury Cares Day, which promotes compassion, acceptance, respect, empowerment, and success. We've had school climate surveys, zero tolerance policies, and not to mention, we have laws such as the New York State Dignity for All Students Act, which seeks to provide students with safe and supportive environment, free from discrimination, intimidation, taunting, harassment, bullying on school property or on a school bus or school function. We've tried the very expensive Aways program that has run for years in our schools with big giant signs posted across our hallways and classrooms, hoping to improve peer relations and make schools safer and educate kids on anti-bullying. In my son's work, I had the Aways program implemented from about 4th grade to 8th grade, and it was useless. That was his words. The only thing it was good for was for the amusement for the kids to make fun of. In the end, it did nothing. Where was the data for that? Did we run data? Was there a decrease in fights at the high school because we had that program for so many years? Did kids experience a notable change in the dignity, in their dignity or value as a human person? Do we have data that supports that? Do you really believe that after all these years of throwing so much money, time, and energy at programs like this, eye-opening enterprises, that this time will be any different? I think not. Another question, why was it not a pilot program first at one of the schools? Who's overseeing it, and who's going to be accountable for it? How are kids supposed to feel safe when this organization clearly has a political agenda? Did you see the blog on their website and titled, "Schools? What are you doing to protect your students?" It says, and I quote, "Fueled by fear and poor leadership, with President Trump calling COVID the Chinese virus, despite quickly backtracking afterwards, these incidents are making an already terrible situation even worse for Asian-American children who experience unprecedented levels of harassment, intimidation, and bullying." This is the propaganda they promote, right out of the CRT playbook. How, as a school, are you going to prevent them from discriminating against students who question what they teach? Will our children begin to receive disciplinary action if they disagree, or if they can't comply with their thinking because it conflicts with their personal beliefs? Have you listened to the dark video on your website that Eye-Opening Enterprises uses entitled, "We Transform"? It does not provide coke-themed mechanisms, but what it does is instill fear and paranoia in our kids with that really creepy music and dark masks and whispering subliminal messages. Did you hear during the chess game what has been said in that video? They say that the government uses you like pawns for their use. Listen to it for yourself and hear it during the chess match. These are dark, dangerous things to say to our kids, especially at such a vulnerable stage and such a vulnerable time in our society. We're living in a time where personal values and beliefs are strongly opposed. This is the society we live in. So you must see this.
Thank you. I just want to make you aware that the time has expired.
Thank you. You, don't you see this as dangerous territory to be treading in a school district? It's not the place of a public school to try to teach children moral truths and values either about race, sexual orientation, or political affiliation. This program has the potential to pit students against each other, classmate against classmate, and possibly create more division, fighting, and hatred than ever before. Please let the parents be the parents and the school be the school.
Could I just add one real quick thing? We would just like to ask if you can let us know how much is being spent in these programs, the CRT programs? How much is being spent? Is there any vetting?
So can I just say one thing?
Yes.
We do not have a CRT program. We have eye openings. So if you want to know the price of that, we can get you that information.
Yes. If you can let us know how much is being spent. And also, I'm interested in knowing, is there any vetting due diligence on these vendors before you bring them on board? Is there any vetting due diligence on what they stand for?
We will have all that information for you.
And also, the third is, how will you measure? How will you measure the success of this program?
Awesome.
Thank you.
We will. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Jack Collins on policy.
Wow, that's some pretty tough stuff to follow, so I'll, maybe I'll be able to give them back some of their time. Good evening, Madam President, Board members, and superintendents and administrators. I'm Jack Collins from Monroe. I have a question for either the superintendent or the president of the board. Please tell me about one example of systemic racism that exists in the district today that remains unresolved.
Okay. We will respond to that.
Yeah, we'll respond at our next meeting.
Excellent. And your, on your agenda, items 12 dot 14, 12 dot 15, and 12 dot 16 are three resolutions that you're planning to approve tonight. The New York Open Meetings Law, I think it's subsection 6, but I could be mistaken on that, requires you to furnish a copy to the public of these documents that you're planning to approve. Are they available to us tonight, or can they be sent to us?
I believe everything should be on the website already for public viewing, and if not, then it will be up there once we post the video.
I was unable to find these three documents.
They may, they have to be approved first, and then they're on board docs.
Approved, and then they get boarded.
So you'll see them tonight.
Excellent. Very good.
If not tonight, tomorrow morning.
Okay. So that should make up for everybody else's overtime.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Michelle Hiranomi on curriculum.
Hiranomi.
Hiranomi, excuse me. You guys are really giving me a run for my money here tonight with the names.
First, I strongly suggest this board read The 5,000 Year Leap. Teachers, here. It contains 28 principles of freedom which our founding fathers said must be understood by all people who desire peace, prosperity, and freedom. Principle 23 states, quote, "A free society cannot survive as a republic without a broad program of education," unquote. There is a strong relationship between universal education and the preservation of freedom. Such must always be the case. Critical race theory, gender theory, shaming, inappropriate sexualization, et cetera, have no place in this or any school district. Whatever happened to the basic curriculum of English, math, and actual history, which includes the Constitution? Although it's been many years since I've been involved in keeping tabs on the education community, there were signs back then that the alternative agenda was in the works. Now, Monroe Woodbury School District openly embraces a forced progressive ideology, from unions to the school board, to the education administrator, to the educators. From my perspective, this district seems to be proudly supporting a brainwashing curriculum, and teachers who don't support the liberal trajectory have no place in the system. I have two questions. Number one, does the board agree with my statements? Number two, is this board familiar with the Constitution and our God-given rights which it secures? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Fine. Thank you.
I have the 28 principles here.
Oh, thank you.
For distribution to all the board members.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. The last speaker is Eileen and Craig Colapi in regards to CRT.
You want me to start? Okay. I thought my wife was going to speak first. I was going to finish. I was going to be cleanup, but now here I am. So I, mine's a little bit different than what she's going to talk about. Mine is more of a suggestion. I'm reading Statute 3204, the education law of the state of New York. "The courses of study and of specialized training beyond the first eight years of full-time public-day schools shall provide for instruction in at least the English language and its uses in civics, hygiene, physical training, and American history, including the principles of government proclaimed in the Declaration of Independence and established by the Constitution of the United States. The courses of study beyond the first eight years of full-time public-day school may provide a program for a course in communism and its methods and its destructive effects." Yes. So I guess I would just suggest or promote that if we're going to have all these programs, some of them which a lot of people disagree with, that maybe we look into programs that teach the detriment of communism and its threat to our free society.
So my husband and I have been Monroe Woodbury taxpayers since 2002. We've had children in the system since 2004. A lot of you we've known as teachers and administrators, and we've had great relationships with you and meetings with you over the years, and I'm just beyond disturbed of all this information that's come out that we've learned about, and I can't, knowing you personally, I can't understand how you're letting this happen. I have to wonder, are your hands tied? Are your jobs on the line? I don't know. I don't know if you just weren't aware what's going on in the classrooms, but this is not okay. I have to believe you all got involved and went into your profession because you love children. How are you doing this to them? How are you going home and sleeping at night if you've hired eye-opening enterprises and all of these people to come in and destroy the children? Maybe you don't realize what it's doing, but that is what it's doing. It's destroying their lives. It's destroying the next generation. So we come before you tonight to just actually bring up an old topic, discrimination, that word's been getting thrown around a lot, and honestly, we tried to speak up a couple times in the past and about our religious beliefs in Monroe Woodbury, and we were, hate mail was sent to our house, a holy statue was stolen from our front walkway right in front of our house. We were attacked online when we tried to say, "Please, your public school, just stay neutral. Don't get involved in moral territory." And we were attacked. Our son doesn't even want us here tonight because he's afraid he's going to be attacked if mom and dad speak up. It's not okay. You cannot just go with one section. Be neutral, be fair to everyone. And that is all we're asking.
So I'll throw one more thing in, these flyers that she's folding up here. I know you're probably thinking, well, we're not doing any of those things, and maybe you're not. And maybe you're not doing any of those things. Maybe there's activist teachers that are doing this on their own, which is probably what's going on, because the teachers, we believe, are very, it's a noble profession. And I believe that some teachers, though, they're getting so comfortable that they're starting to push their own beliefs. This flyer was handed out, I don't know if you know, that's the Marxist Socialist fist that this one teacher was handing out to her class. My son, the last day of school, said the teacher's like, well, it's the last day of school. Let me tell you what I think of Trump, because you can't get me now. Like, these things are, we're constantly hearing this from our children. We don't want to come out and say something all the time, but this stuff is going on with some teachers. So, and that's what we're trying to get across. We're calling it critical race theory. I know you don't probably have a program called critical race theory, but there are things that are associated with it that are going on with some teachers in the classroom.
Thank you.
And a quick last thing. Our daughter's, she brought a Bible to school one day. She just wanted to read it. It was thrown on the ground by another student. Again, we're not going to come out about everything. Our same daughter's...
That's just kids being kids. That's all I forget about.
But that's part of the bullying, you know, what happened there. Same daughter's ELA teacher told her the Bible was a fairy tale. So again, there's been discrimination going on for years, and we're not screaming and hollering about everything, but this is just too much, and we are begging and pleading if you would do something to stop this, please.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for all of the speakers, and we will be approving this evening that there is a change for our next board meeting. So we will be adding that this evening and approving it. So our next meeting is going to be for Wednesday, August 25th. So that is when we will have responses for you. You're more than welcome to come and sign up with Ms. Vitucci to hear the response and/or watch the video once it gets posted. We did not have any comments at last month's meeting, so there are no updates for that. So with that, I'm going to take a five-minute break before we continue with the agenda.
Thank you.
Good evening. We're returning back after a short break. No board business was conducted during that time. We're going to move on with the agenda. Item number six is an update on district goals.
Yes. I just wanted to give everybody context. So on June 16th, the last board meeting of the last school year, the cabinet and I presented to the Board of Education our goals for 2021, 2022. And so part of what we're doing is we're going to be updating the goals. So I have Dr. Vias and Mr. Kravitz, who are going to talk about goals number one and two. Goals number three we will not talk about because they have to do with financial, and Mr. Cahill is not here. So when he comes back, we'll make sure that he updates his goals.
I mean, we could try to answer those questions. You might just not like our answers. That's all right. So as, thank you, Mrs. Rodriguez.
So we should, let me just go through that. So these are the three goals, just in case you haven't heard them. Goal number one is using data and organizational processes to identify opportunities to improve student outcome. Goal number two is strengthening community engagement and parent support to enhance relationships between parents, families, school, and community. And the third is, Mr. Cahill's, it's a pre-referendum planning, reserve plan update, and long-range financial plan. So we'll talk just solely on goal number one and goal number two.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rodriguez, board members. So today, as Mrs. Rodriguez mentioned about the first goal, that using data and organizational processes to identify opportunities to improve the student outcome. In last few months, we have done some homework on looking at the various systems in terms of central repository system, and what does that looks like for our schools, for our school district. This allows us to talk a little bit about the predictive analytics to identify the students at risk or of graduating in order to get them back to the track, improve the student growth, and consolidate the disparate data that we have across the different systems. In looking at the various system, initially, we identified, we sort listed the three systems, and ultimately, the central repository system that we picked was Hanyouid, that is now owned by Power School. The other two were Educational Vista and Renaissance Learning. And the key factor to picking in this product, the central repository system, was basically how the interoperability of the data works, where are the data silos, and then how, as a district, can leverage the system that will benefit to our students and staff to improve the instructional outcomes. And looking at this, basically a circle, if you notice that this system allows, our Power School is our student management system, this platform will allow us to kind of bring all the various data from the different system. Our student management system hosts tons of data, whether it's the attendance, demographic, discipline, test, testing in a different state assessment. We also use Renaissance STAR product as our math and ELA testing. This will allow, this platform will allow us to integrate all the data that are currently in the different silos, and ultimately work through the interoperabilities platform and ultimately into the one platform. This gives us administrators and teachers an important aspect of, instead of taking the manual data and updating that, this will actually help us to identify the students very early and then help them to improve the student outcome. A perfect example would be if a high school, if the senior is at the risk at the high school in the beginning of the school year, instead of looking at the Google or Excel spreadsheets time to time, this will help us to improve, to keep a constant eye on how the student is progressing, and how can we help the student to basically prepare for making sure the students are on track. The cost of the system is, we are looking at the two different packages in this system. One is the base package, which is the Hanyouid platform and Student Essential and the Advanced Suite. And including the deployment training, the year one cost would be $70,000. The second year would be basically the cost of the platform usage, so the cost goes down from $70,000 to $42,000, and the same thing with the third year as the $42,000. The key here is we are looking to first year to identify the key systems that we can pull the data, and then year two and three, we will eventually add the various data systems, like our HR systems, and ultimately, our financial system. So that's kind of the process that we are planning to follow. The central repository rollout plan, this is just a base timeline based on the approval of the Board of Education, approval of the goal in June. We have started working on some of these bullet points, but ultimately, we are hoping to roll out this, starting this month all the way to the March. This will include the deployment of connection of the various system. That part will be mostly done with the, in the behind-the-scenes process. Once the system is ready, we'll bring the administrators onboard, and ultimately, the key stakeholders from a teacher's perspective to give them the access and work with them in terms of providing the training and help them to utilize this platform to make the better decision based on the various datas. Any questions on that?
I have two questions. So my first is, when you mentioned for the three years, is that because it's just a timeframe of a three-year period for each, or would, and then it'll be added on in the fourth year if we continue with it?
So if we continue, the way the platform works is the first year is the cost of platform, then training and deployment. Our goal is to ultimately, at the end of the first year, we should have an internal expertise to provide the training to the various stakeholders. So then, from second year on, it would be just the cost of accessing the platform. So if we go to year four, it should keep still be $42,000.
It would keep at that same amount. Okay. And has this been budgeted for already for this coming year?
So the answer is yes. However, it's a little bit different. If you remember, we were looking at the learning management system last year, and ultimately, Google came out with the LMS-like feature. So we, as a district, decided to stay with the Google Workspace as our platform. So that cost was very similar to the first year cost, and then we will be using that funding to basically ultimately purchase this tool.
Okay. Anybody else?
Yeah. And to be, just to clarify, so if you get through the first year and you find out that the system, you know, because it's a gradual thing where you're integrating, doesn't provide all the features, I assume it also provides for switch, you might switch systems if it's appropriate.
Yes, but we would hopefully not, because the pre-work has to be done, a lot of behind-the-scenes work. So we're not hoping for it, but we will come back to the board with our findings and then ultimately take the lead from the board, which direction board wants us to go.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So I'm going to be focusing on goal number two, which revolves around family and community engagement. And one of the things that both goal one and two, and subsequently, goal three, are doing is they allow us to ask questions. What are we doing well? Where, or what, or how do we need to improve? So four years ago, just so everybody understands, four years ago, we crafted a strategic plan in this district with support from PLC Associates to help guide our district. We did that. We created a core team of, a core team which included over 80 people, staff members, community members, family members, parents, students, were all a part of the core team. And with that, we came up with things like our vision and our mission statement. Those were really important pieces of that meeting or that work. In February of 2018, we administered a survey. And you may remember taking the survey. We had over 6,000 people take it, and we had students take it, we had our staff, we had our community, we had our families take it as well. And what we did is, after we administered that survey, we then looked at our results and said, you know, these are four areas that need to be focused on. And the four areas that we broke it down to were curriculum, communication throughout the district, social-emotional learning, and student engagement. And then we created objectives based on those four areas. We then got to work, rolled up our sleeves, got to work, created some objectives to go along with that, that we could try to meet. And our objectives were based on a five-year plan, because that was how the whole strategic plan was created. We administered a survey in late February of 2020, and just as we were getting the results in very early March, March 13th, we shut down because of COVID, and our focus shifted. Our focus shifted a lot as soon as that happened. So here we are now. What we've done now is, we met just last week with a woman by the name Betsy Smith from PLC Associates. Betsy is a retired superintendent and school educator, and she's a consultant with this group. And we reviewed a comparison of the 2017-18 data with the 1920 data. It was a small group of, it was myself, Dr. Vias, Dr. Hassler, and Ms. Spennely met with Betsy. And as we looked at everything, we identified general areas of strength and then also areas of opportunity or areas for growth. What we'll now do is we'll work closely with our district administrators, beginning on August 18th, where we'll present to them all of our information across the district, both at the middle school, high school level, the elementary level, and that will also include our district-wide directors. Once we review that, we'll then look at our areas that, you know, again, what are we doing well? What can we improve? And we'll call back that core team together in October. And then we will reconvene our task force meetings. Some of the information that we get from, you know, the 18, something, 1920 information may or may not be the same as, you know, hopefully, it's better than the first administration survey. So we'll do a deeper dive into that, reform our task forces, and then engage in them. And then we give our survey again, and our next survey is scheduled for the February of 2022. Our goal, again, is to pound the pavement, get as many people as we can to respond, because it's important. It's important for us. We're, you know, want to be open, and we want to understand what the results are, and then we kind of go from there. All right? Any questions about that piece?
Will you be using the data that's collected from goal one to influence the final outcome of what you focus on?
We'll be using, I mean, most of our data is going to be driven from the actual survey. Is that...
Not to inform, so there is a value of keeping the data consistency in check, so we will use the same survey, so then we can see the areas of growth or areas of opportunity. The goal one data may tell the similar story, or it may tell the different story.
The part I'm looking at is the action that you take to say, here's an opportunity. Or if it's only based on the survey...
I hear what you're saying.
Right. Because...
And all related to the people that are here.
It's like, we were told, no, we don't do critical race theory, but someone got up and showed it to us. So we need actual data to follow through with it to say, hey, if the data shows us something a little different than what the survey says, because we, you know, people might say, hey, I think this, they may be right or wrong.
I think for the family and community engagement piece, a lot of that will be, the focus will be the actual survey. For the, for goal number one, which will focus on more of the curriculum piece, that obviously, you may not garner everything from the same exact survey.
That makes sense.
And it may also point to, some of the results of the survey may point to other areas that we have to dig further into student achievement data. You know, we have various surveys regarding professional development, standards-based PD, and things like that, that we have other data on that we gather from the staff.
I think the surveys are really critical, because it's the public's feedback and our feedback. I just want to make sure we keep it in perspective, right? That says, like, to Dr. Hassler's point, if the data shows something on the curriculum side, and everybody thinks it's something else, that we can help get that back.
Right. I mean, an example is, after the first round of surveys, we had a curriculum group, but there were, there were sort of subcommittees within that group. One of them was professional development, and we learned that we didn't even have an effective tool to garner feedback about professional development that we provided to the staff. So part of the process was actually developing...
Makes sense.
An updated evaluation tool to make sure that we were collecting the proper data on, after we send a person to some form of professional development, either a conference or PD being offered through BOSI's or something like that, that they provide us with proper evaluation and feedbacks, so that we know, did it garner enough information for us about the effectiveness of that? Should we continue using that resource and so on?
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. I have two. One, can you send us the presentation slideshows, that we all have it? And two, who do you anticipate that's going to make up the core team for the task force meetings? Is that the high school and administrators and middle school and elementary administrators, or is that...
No, the core team will use the same formula that we used the first time, which would be a cross-section of district, you know, members. So same groups, students, faculty, staff, parents, community members, board members. We had elected officials on our last core team. It was a, there were a lot of folks in that group.
It's about 80 people.
Yeah, a little bit more than 80.
That's great.
Okay, good. Anybody else have any questions?
Someone has a question.
Oh, I'm sorry. Does Dawn have a question? Eric, can you just say?
All right. Okay.
She does not have a question.
Oh, she does not?
It's like I'm dying.
Okay, sorry. Thank you.
Sorry.
Technology. Okay.
All right. Thank you, guys.
Okay, thank you.
Good, thank you.
Next, we will have an update on the Universal Pre-K Program given by Mrs. Rodriguez.
And Dr. Hassler.
And Dr. Hassler, excuse me.
We're coming in twos. So I wanted to give both the board and the community an update on Universal Pre-K Program. And so I always feel like it's important to sort of, to give a historical perspective. In April of 2021, the governor issued his budget, and in the budget, he added additional 232 school districts that would be receiving UPK money. We were very excited, but it was a daunting task. And so Monroe Woodbury received 462 seats, and part of the requirement was that we would have to collaborate with what they call eligible agencies, and the determination to be an eligible agency was something that the state took over. In other words, there were certain criterias for you to be considered an eligible agency. And so with local preschools to increase the capacity. We do not currently have room for 462 students in our district, but we certainly wanted to do this, but we felt this was a monumental task. Most programs like this take about a year to complete, but we felt it was important. So what we did was, we worked with one of our building principals and Mrs. Caldwell, and she was able to identify three classrooms. So at this point, what we know is the following. The UPK grant that we get, the allocation is $5,700 per student, and the districts are required to use some of their own money to fund the program. So one of the things that we're looking to do is, and I'll talk later about ESA grants, we did receive $8.6 million, and we'll use some of that money to offset the cost.
So if you go back and look at the communication that we did on May 14th, to kind of reiterate what Mrs. Rodriguez was saying, that communication that went out from Mrs. Rodriguez, she kind of expressed that we weren't 100% confident that we were going to be able to pull this off. We believed at that time that the only way that we were going to be able to successfully do this was if we partnered with outside groups. The ability for us to be able to pull this together in a four-month span, we were sort of hesitant. Between May 14th and June 18th, we realized that we had enough space, had sapphire to be able to offer a few classrooms worth. We actually brought in a retired administrator who worked for another school district, who implemented a UPK program in that school district, who was able to bring a wealth of knowledge and experience to help us kind of get some of this off the ground. So much so that by the end of June, we were able to send out a request for proposals, an RFP, asking for proposals from local preschools. an RFP, asking for proposals from local preschools on their capacity to be able to provide classrooms also for students to attend their programs. We started in July, earlier this month, we posted for teachers for the internal program at Sapphire. The the communication that we did in mid-June, we asked parents to notify the school district if they were interested in having their child attend the preschool program. We're still in the process of gathering that feedback from from the community. In addition, in working with Carrie Anne, we're in the process of developing the curriculum, creating the professional development, looking at the assessment tools, looking at the screening tools that are necessary and requirements for us to be able to to develop the program.
So what are the next steps? So we closed our RFP, and we will be awarding Little Pals twenty-four UPK seats. So I'm excited about that. We actually made a site visit last week to look at the actual place where our children will be. And then we are able to offer forty, fifty-four seats with a total of seventy-eight seats this year. So I I am really excited that we can actually do that. Dr. Hassler mentioned that there's going to be, did you mention that there was a lottery?
I wasn't, I haven't mentioned it yet, but I was going to.
So go ahead.
So i- in order, because we're able to offer only the seventy-eight seats, we're going to have to conduct a random lottery for the people that have expressed interest in participating in the program. We wanted to release the final model, which is the twenty-four seats that's that are going to be at Little Pals and the fifty-four seats that are going to be at Sapphire. There's going to be a random lottery based upon the people who have expressed interest on on the program. We'll be collecting interest through Monday. If there are still people who want to be able to participate, they they should send us an email. The information is on the on the district website. We'll be holding the lottery next week, where all of the names of the the children that parents would like to enroll in the program will, you know, will be randomly selected and 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 put into the into the lottery. And then we'll gradually go through and and notify people whether they were selected and what their what their placement will be, as well as anybody that's going to be placed on the on on a waitlist. Following that notification, starting the week of August ninth, we will have to begin the screening and registration process, that's mandated, where people have to come in and they have to go through the registration process to demonstrate that they're residents of the school district and that their kids are of compulsory age to attend the universal pre-K program. And then we'll continue the communication from there, notifying those individuals about what the structure and the design of the program is going to be like, what the curriculum will be, as well as those that are going to be participating in Little Pals. We have to maintain a collaborative relationship with them, where they need to implement the curriculum that we design also because we are providing the support for their program. That curriculum that's going to be at Little Pals has to mirror the the program that's being offered within the school district as well. So we'll continue that collaboration and continuing to release that information as it's developed.
And just for full transparency, the cost per pupil that are attending UPK is six thousand three hundred and fifty-seven dollars and twenty cents. That, of course, the rest, we we will give them about fifty-six hundred dollars. So it'll cost us around fourteen thousand dollars to fund the UPK at Little Pals. And I think, again, a universal pre-K is is a, has been proven to be very successful. I think the other piece that's very important to note is that these students, it's universal, so it's it's across the board. It doesn't target a specific group of people, so that all socioeconomic status can, students can can actually attend this program. And I think we're going to have a really good collaboration with Angel Leonardo. She was very helpful. We met with her, she was excited. So we're both very excited about starting this new program and having four-year-olds in our Sapphire building. And I think, I don't know, Ms. Caldwell around here? She is, she is also very excited. We kept her all the way back there because she's too excited. But but we we truly are excited, and I encourage the board members to come and visit when you see four-year-olds in the building. It's a, it's it's going to be very unique. And and again, early intervention is the key. So I just wanted to share that.
And and the program, the program is is because we previously have not qualified for UPK money prior to this, it it's considered new money, which means that there's a whole set of of regulations
New rules.
Right, new rules that we have to follow. One of them being the program will be a five-hour, five-day-a-week program. It will not be a part-time program.
Hundred and eighty days.
Right.
Oh, we have a couple of questions.
Yes.
Were you ready for questions yet?
Yeah, sure. Yeah, always ready.
Actually, three questions. Number one, transportation.
There is no transportation.
Correct.
Correct.
Number two, are you planning to increase the numbers? Will this funds to continue to come from the state on a year-over-year basis?
Well
This is something that the school district is going to have to carry. You want to be central.
So we were informed that this money is ongoing in perpetuity. But of course, that's what the state education, that's what the state told us, and that's what our plan is. However, we do think that if at some point this program is not continued, we want to make a commitment to it. So that's why we began slow. As I said, seventy-four slots is is slow, is is a low number, rather. And I think it's important for us to take this one step at a time.
And and we only received the funding for the number of students that we service. So if we're saying that we're servicing seventy-eight seats, we only receive seventy-eight times fifty-seven, sixty. As hopefully we're able to expand the program down the line, and, you know, this is sort of the initial cohort, as we're hopefully able to develop the program. Certainly, there's a possibility about putting another RFP out at the following of this following school year to see if there are any additional community partners that want to maybe offer a similar opportunity. Are we able to expand and offer additional classes within the school district? As we hopefully expand the program down the line, the funding will increase proportionally to the number of kids that we service.
Thank you. Dawn?
Does the state currently fund kindergarten?
Yes.
It does, okay. I know for a while I thought it
Yeah. Mm-hmm.
Thank you. I think
Here, you essentially answered my question. I don't want it to know what's ongoing.
Hold on a second, I'm sorry. You asked me a question. Does the state education department fund kindergarten? No, they don't. We pay for kindergarten.
Right. That's the reason why I
Is there, you mean, is there an alternate source of funding specifically for kindergarten?
No.
No.
And that's why I asked the question, because I I just wanted to put it in perspective that, you know, it's so important that that the state funds pre-K, but as soon as she gets out a pre-K and you go into K, they don't fund it.
Right. There's a portion of, you know
Right, right. And and that should kind of indicate what they're going to do to us financially down the road, right? I mean, that, if there's any indication, they're they're telling us to start educating students a year earlier, and they've already not funded the following year or whenever it
Right. But they don't fund first grade or second grade, so I I think, and and Monroe Woodbury has been unique in other school districts, that we have had full-day kindergarten for a long time, where neighboring school districts only have kindergarten for half a day.
I think what, I totally support this. I'm just saying, you know, when when you look at what the state is doing, it's like, I think it's great that the school district is putting the effort into educating students at pre-K. I do think it's very important.
And
I I just want to point out from a political standpoint
Correct.
that, you know, let's give them, let's get them started and then
And and this is certainly something that we we would have loved the opportunity years ago to be able to offer that.
Of course.
But we have never qualified. I mean, again, that's the reason why this money sort of falls under the category of new money for us, because
Sure.
we have not been able to, you know, old money, some school districts that previously qualified, were able to have, they they could grandfather-in a part-time program because they previously offered that program because they already received funding for it.
Right.
And we don't have that luxury.
And I think it's great that you guys did the RFP, and you have a third party as well, so that we can help additional students.
Right. And I think it's it's, you know, the parents are excited about it. As I said before, we're excited about bringing in four-year-olds into our building. It'll be unique, but early intervention is is really the key, right? Because it can eventually offset the cost in third and fourth grade, maybe reduce the number of students that get classified because you have early intervention. So all those things are 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 good.
Full support, yeah.
Did you have
I'm sorry, Anthony, did you want to
Essentially, you answered it.
Okay.
If we decided next year to expand it, would we still be eligible to receive grant money?
Yes.
And I guess since we're talking about funding, any idea how long the grant program will be there?
I've asked that question, and we've gone on a couple of conferences. They're saying the money is there, it's in perpetuity, that they guarantee it's, it comes in. So it's not special money, it's part of our budget. So you'll see, it's a budget line item, so that's a good thing, because then we'll see that every year. But again, it's not like we're going to get two-point-six million dollars. We have to spend the money to get to get reimbursed for it.
Right. So Do you want to go? All right. You said that it was about sixty-three hundred dollars and change for the per student. And was that just for the twenty-four that are attending
Correct.
Little Pals?
Yes.
What is the cost for the fifty-four that are going to be housed at Sapphire?
So it it will cost us more because we have to hire teachers, right? We have to have higher certified teachers, and they'll be on. We haven't necessarily costed it all out because we haven't hired anybody, right? So the cost really depends, the cost will be dependent upon the teachers that we hire. So once we hire the teachers, then we can tell you the cost.
And those teachers will be part of the
Yes, they will.
And the model, the model that we'll have at Sapphire, the fifty-four seats is three classes, eighteen students per class. That model, according to state regulation, is required to have a certified teacher and a teaching assistant in the classroom. So all of the factors that that Mrs. Rodriguez mentioned will fall into play once we finalize the staffing and everything else to go along
So that that'll be a significantly different number?
Yes.
The fourteen thousand was only for
The twenty-four.
The twenty-four students.
Yeah.
But we'll have, if you want, I'll have an update. We'll give you the number.
Please.
Yes.
So how will the early intervention be applied to the outside seats? Because
So they'll be doing the exact same curriculum that we are, and we'll be partnering with them. So assessments, you know, looking at the the student needs, it's all going to be the same.
And and just to give you an example of that, I I had mentioned that following notification of selection and placement, everyone has to come in for screening and registration. In order to be able to qualify for this, you have to be a district resident, and your child has to be of compulsory age. We have to screen, just like anybody who has a student who's attended Monroe Woodbury from kindergarten, the kids go through case screening when they when they come into the program. Every student, whether they're at Little Pals or at Monroe Woodbury, starts out with that initial screening process. Any assessments that we do along the way, you know, we 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 go through benchmark assessments, winter, fall, winter, fall, winter, spring, the same series of assessments have to take place both within the Monroe Woodbury program as well as the Little Pals program. Curriculum has to be the same.
Yeah.
We we have to maintain the same level of of program on both
So then there still exists the possibility the child may not qualify based on the developmental milestones?
Uh, no, the the screening, the screening process is more for
The screening process that you do in the beginning, will it
That, I think what you're talking about is something a little bit different, that there there's also, I mean, one of the things that's on every single Board of Education agenda is CPSC, where there are students who qualify for services. That's something that's completely separate from this program. That's something that's run by the county, not by the school district.
So when you're running a lottery, how do you know that the children that are applying don't actually have special needs?
They, right now, the the lottery does not apply to that. The lottery is, and that's no different than kindergarten. When when a parent registers for kindergarten, you have the, you you have, if the district offers that program, you have the ability to be able to be given access to that program. The same thing is for the UPK service. If there's a student that is in need of additional services, they fall under
The CPSC.
At the age of four, some parents may not know that their kids have special needs.
Right, right.
Which is, which is important, right?
Right.
So if you have parents who know that their child needs has special needs and they go through CPS, but we won't know that until they're in kindergarten.
Right.
So this actually addresses that in pre-kindergarten.
Correct.
Right? So I think that's that's the important piece. It's identifying the needs of the students early on to provide them with the early intervention.
Okay. I have a couple. I just, one of them is from Dawn. She just wants you to clarify in regards to the Little Miracles program
Sure.
that we currently have at the high school and the differentiation with the UPK.
Yep. So the Little Miracles program is sort of our our preschool program that we've had historically that runs in conjunction with our early childhood class that's up at the high school. Right now, the model of that program does not align with the pre-K program that we're required to implement
Okay.
to receive funding for this. That's something that we are certainly considering down the line, but we weren't prepared to make that shift in the high school Little Miracle program for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. That is when we talk about the expansion. That's one of the areas that we would potentially be looking at. And one of the reasons why is that program is run on a part-day basis, on a semester basis. So basically, there are four different cohorts of kids. There's the spring group AM, spring group PM, fall group AM, fall group PM. We would have to shrink down the number of kids to only eighteen kids that that program will be able to service.
Year-round.
So there would have to be a lot of modification in that program to have it aligned with the requirements of this grant that we're just not ready to make. So that program is going to exist for one, at least one more year
The way it is.
the way that it previously existed, being collaborated with by the early childhood high school kids that are in that course. The the goal would be down the line to certainly make that align with what we're talking about here. We're just, we just weren't prepared to be able to make that shift yet.
Again, this is year one.
Right.
So we really are looking at, you know, how this this program rolls out, what are the needs, what are the costs, what are the the costs that we may not have been prepared for? So that'll, that'll be a determining factor as we move forward to year two, what we do.
I think that was one of the questions that I don't know if any other board members have gotten, but it's a question that I've gotten, is in regards to, can you talk a little bit about the RFP and the fact that if my child went to St. Paul's, I am not eligible to use these monies to go and use it towards St. Paul's? Can you just clarify that?
Yes.
Because I think there's a little confusion in regards to that.
So the RFP process, it puts out a request for for proposal, and it allows local agencies that are that qualify to put in an RFP. We did not receive anything from any of those schools. They did not put in an RFP, so therefore they cannot be eligible for it. I'm not sure if they're waiting to see what this is like in a year and and potentially do, you know, put it up again the following year.
And I think a lot of them had similar challenges that we had. We were notified in April. We basically have four months to put the program together. We we were not able, you know, it took us a while to sift through all of the regulations, identify what criteria had to be put into the RFP that they need to be able to demonstrate. I mean, there are many, many factors, ranging from types of insurance that they need to carry, certain regulations about physical space within the rooms, that there's a lot of considerations that they have to consider. The RFP came out in June. It it takes a lot of work to make sure that you have the capacity to be able to meet that need. Certainly, because of the timing, other programs may have a year to be able to get, you know, they, they have a copy of the RFP, so they know what the criteria are. They may have the, the time now, over the next year, to get the necessary things that they need in place to be able to put forth, uh, a competitive proposal for it.
So, that could go to Sergey's question, then, for future years. We could potentially have other community preschools that would then be eligible to house some of the students.
There are, there are a lot of school districts out there who have previously offered UPK programs or that are using this money, where they're not establishing anything within the school district, and they may be partnering with half a dozen different preschools within their school community. So, that, that, that opportunity certainly will exist in the future.
But, but just to add, just to add something is that I, I think we felt as though it was really important for us to develop the program internal, in-house as well, because that way, we have a better understanding of what the needs are and what we want to see in the programs that we visit.
Ultimately, we, we want to, we, we want to provide the program for as many kids. So, so certainly, we believe within our own capacity to be able to provide that. Also, you know, there, there's a benefit to having some of the program within the school district, because some of the kids that are going to be in the program at Sapphire are going to be kindergartners at Sapphire the subsequent school year.
Correct, they're going to be our students. But that leads me to my other question was, and I don't know if you have this, because I think it says on here that they have until August second.
Yep.
But do you have a rough idea as to the interest as of now?
I do.
Okay. Would you like to share that?
I, I, I can't give the exact amount, because we're still sifting through. What we did was, anybody that sent us initial email, we created a Google form for them to give us information. Child's name, child's date, address, and things like that. There are some kids that are on the list that don't meet the age requirement. There are some families that are on the, because some of the local preschools, for example, emailed it out to their school community. But they may be attending Little Pals, and they may be attending Kids Corner, and the parents may work in Monroe Woodbury, but they reside in a, in a different school district. You have to be a resident. So, so I can't give you the exact amount yet, uh, until we fully sift through the full list, and we have to kind of go through with the fine-tooth comb to make sure that the students that are entering into the lottery qualify based upon the criteria that has been?
But he does have a rough idea, okay? He does have a rough idea.
So, by next meeting, you'll, because my, my reasoning is, I'm curious to see what the actual interest is from the community for this program.
I'll say that in the seat seventy-eight.
That I know, but I want to know how many people want it.
I can give you the number.
Okay.
It's, it's, it's around a hundred people so far.
Okay.
Because he didn't want to give the number, but I think it's important. We have about a hundred people who have, we have a dedicated, uh, page, e-mail address that people have been sending requests to. So, it's around a hundred, um, which is, which I'm excited about, because we have seventy-eight seats.
Right, that's good. I just hate to disappoint families that might not?
And there'll be a waiting list as well, right? Eventually, we'll, we'll create a waiting list.
I'm hoping that the, the many people that watch this video will, uh, send, send out information to their friends, to, if they're interested, to send an email, so that way, they can get on the list.
Yes.
Just to get an idea in percentage, what is our normal kindergarten class size?
Uh, we're, we're usually in the four-hundred to five-hundred range.
So, we've got like one quarter of the kids who'd be coming in the following year as kindergartners.
And, and there, there are many implications. Some, you know, the, the, for example, the Sapphire program, there are elements of this that may not necessarily apply to people, where, um, you know, sometimes people have their child enrolled in programs outside of the school district for childcare purposes. It's not just about preschool. So, so there are elements of this that may be limiting for people's interests. So, and, and who knows? It's, it's brand new. So, you know, people may sort of wait and see to what the program will look like before they're willing to commit.
All of which makes perfect sense.
Correct.
Dawn has a follow-up question. I don't know if her microphone's working now.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
If not, Bargoff will repeat it.
Maureen, can you hear?
Dr. Hasser, I think, I, I just want some further clarification on the Little Miracles versus this program. And, and I, I think what was even more important for me was just now, when you're talking about they may not get into the lottery for this, well, then, we refer them to Little Miracles? Or what are the similarities? Do they still, do they do screening for the Little Miracles program?
The, the Little, the Little Miracles program is, is quite different than this program. Again, largely because it's only a part of the day. So, it, it's, it's an AM group and a PM group, and it's only for half a year. So, it, it, the scope of, of the curriculum that's being covered in that program in comparison to this program is, is quite different. Um, the, the, in fact, we've already started, there's, if anybody's interested in the Little Miracles program, uh, there's information, there's information on the district website that they have to go through a process also for the Little Miracles program. The, the Little Miracles program is, is something that is, is taught by the early childhood students and the high school staff that teach that program as well. So, so the, the, the scope of the curriculum of that program is, is quite different from this. So, I mean, one of the things that we've considered was, um, because there would be a limiting number of kids, if we had to go to the model that would qualify us for, for funding that program, um, do we have the capacity to be able to expand it to two classes rather than just one class? Because right now, it's one morning class, one afternoon class, fall and spring. So, we're able to, you know, it's, it's basically seventy-two, I think-ish, kids that are able to, to participate in that program, but it's only for half a day, for half a year.
I also think that, that the goal of the Little Miracles program is twofold. One is to obviously impact the, the younger students. The second one is to allow the high school students who are taking the course to explore, you know, education as a, as a career option. So, that's obviously a little bit different focus than the UPK.
Right.
I, I understand the differences, but thank you both, Maureen and Eric. I'm just trying to, I guess, say that a lot of the members in the community might not be aware of the differences and, you know, that they're completely different programs. So, are we going to communicate something to the community about their options for the, either UPK or our Little Miracle program?
Yeah, I, I can certainly do that.
I, I, I think one of the, one of the, one of the concerns or issues that we have is that when we're talking about families that we don't know, it's hard to communicate that to them.
Right.
So, for example, if you have a four-year-old, we don't necessarily know that you have a four-year-old, right? We, we don't send out that information. We know, once you've registered your child, that you will have a child that lives in the district. So, that's an important piece, unless you have a sibling, right? The only way we know that is if you have a sibling. So, a lot of the communication that we've had has been either through our website, you know, emails, posting things. It's a little bit more challenging for us to get that information out. That's why, that's one of the reasons why we decided that we felt it was important to talk about this at a board meeting, because more people watch the board meetings, and they'll have access to more information. You're shaking your head. You don't think people watch our board meetings? I think they do.
Um, and, and again, I think that, unfortunately, another factor of time has been our capacity to be able to communicate it. I, I think, I, I think, I, I think, once people have their children participate in the program, they'll know to be on the lookout for it, for their younger kids. And I think, over time, certainly word will spread, um, and, you know.
But I think another important point is that the twenty-four seats are going to be within the Sapphire school and the fifty-four.
No, the fifty-four is the Sapphire.
Sapphire and twenty-four out.
Yes.
So, if, God forbid, next year, the state decides to pull the money, the kids that are housed here may be able to continue.
Correct.
Whereas, children who are housed with the partners in the community may not be able to.
Well, they, they will come into kindergarten, they, they will come into?
But, but in terms of the next class, it may, that program may not exist with the partners, but may still exist.
Right. I'm an optimist. I believe that they will continue to fund that for a, an extended period of time. I've actually reached out to the senator who wrote the grant, um, because I needed to know what is the possibility of this grant going away? Why begin something that I would end, you know, end up, uh, not continuing with? And we've been told over and over again, and we've gone to several of these workshops regarding this, that this money will either come from the state or the federal government. Either way, we're going to continue to get this funding. And so, I've reached out to my colleagues who have had the old money, I call it, um, and they've had this money for ten, over ten years. So, I don't foresee that happening. But again, with the pandemic, I've learned that you never count on anything a hundred percent. So, again, part of the reason why we went small, especially since we don't have the spaces, start small and, and see where that goes.
And the rules for the old money, as you said before, it's different. So, some districts, UPK is a half-day program, not a full-day, five-hour program, like it comes with, with this.
Like this, exactly. This new money is, we have to, the students have to have the same a hundred and eighty days, just like our students. So, it's very much tied to our own, you know, uh, school days.
Which is part of the reason why it made sense for us to really want to create at least a portion of the program within Sapphire.
Was there something specific that changed? Why do we qualify now but not before?
Um, I think the senator who, who sponsored the bill is a graduate of Monroe Woodbury.
Does that mean like you lowered the bar or is that?
Well, I, I think, I think that thi- this is, it's a major statewide initiative. I mean, it's not just Monroe Woodbury or a handful of school districts. It's two-hundred-and-thirty-plus new school districts that are qualifying for money. So, I think that this is really something that the state is looking at investing in.
When you say qualified, like, what, how did we qualify, I guess, is my question.
I, I think, to be honest with you, I think everybody qualified. I think every school district in Orange County qualified. Because originally, when the grant was first written, it was written only for New York City. And so, what happened was, the senators from the city and the senators from upstate said, wait a minute, you know, you have this pool of money, but it's only going for New York City. You know, the suburbs wanted as well. So, there's been a lot of discussion over the last couple of years to say, well, why can't the suburbs get the same kind of money that people get in New York City? And so, that's, that's part of the, you know, that was part of the negotiation for the new budget from the governor's office.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Oh, sorry.
So, I, I wanted to kind of give, you know, this, I'm still going. So, the?
This is the state on the way.
But it's another item on the agenda.
I know. For those that are following along, we are moving on to item number eight.
So, um, this year, the district not only got two-point-six million dollars for UPK, but we also got what we call ARAMoney. And that's eight-point-six million dollars. And so, ARAMoney, and I, and I use the acronym ESSER. It's the Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Release Fund. And that has specific purposes, and I just wanted to share that with people. It's to continue the safe return of students to in-person instruction while addressing the academic and the social-emotional needs of students impacted by remote learning and the COVID-nineteen pandemic. So, when that money was given to us, it has, it's over three years. And of course, money comes with rules, and so, they gave us sort of the playbook. You can use the money for the following things. And so, as we look at this money, we, we, we've determined that there's certain things that we have to do. For example, part of it has to be used for learning loss. And so, I'm going to have Dr. Hasser talk a little bit about our summer bridges.
So, going into the, the conclusion of the school year, and we looked at all of the pivoting that we did and the shifting between?
We're not using that word anymore.
Live, live, live in-person instruction and remote instruction, and students having the ability to be able to be remote. We, we decided that we wanted to offer some sort of summer program. And before we found out that we were getting this grant, we were looking at a very, a very, a much smaller-scale program, where basically, it was going to be a reading, writing, and math, half-a-day program for students to come in. They get additional support in reading, writing, and math. It was going to be very targeted, and they would go home.
Can I just interrupt for a second? I think what, what needs to be noted is that prior to getting this money, school districts are told that we were going to be short money this year. We were told that we were going to have our budgets cut. So, I think that when, when we received this money, it was, it was a surprise. Um, we had not anticipated, and I'm not saying that I'm not grateful for the money, I really am. Um, but it was a surprise. So, so that's important to know. Prior to this, we were told that we were, our budgets would be cut dramatically.
And so, between offering a limited program, we were also looking at offering a program to a very targeted group of students that were identified for academic intervention. Um, when we found out that we were getting this money, it, it offered us the opportunity to be able to ultimately construct the Summer Bridges program the way that it exists now, which is a full-day program that is split between a portion of the day being core instruction in reading, writing, and math, and a portion of the day being enrichment in art, music, and physical education. Um, we have the ability, because the school lunch program was continued, uh, the free school lunch program was continued into the summer. We offer breakfast every day to the kids. We offer lunch every single day for the kids. Um, the program is, is a month-long. Currently, we have approximately eight-hundred to eight-hundred-and-fifty students every single day, grades K through A, coming in for the Summer Bridges program, which is great. Uh, uh, about five-hundred or so lunches are being served every single day to kids. So, you know, when you, when you talk about the, the safe return to in-person instruction while, you know, addressing academic needs of students, this has been a great opportunity to be able to offer to our kids. Plus?
Oh, I was going to say that.
Go ahead.
I wasn't saying that.
You should, go ahead. I'm going to give that to you.
Plus, plus, we were able to, um, hire some of our own students, either they're, you have to be sixteen and older. We have approximately fifty students that are participating in this program. And what this does for us, you should all know, there is a teacher shortage. Um, and so, it allows our students to look into the profession of teaching. And I will tell you that I've heard nothing but wonderful things from our students who are excited about coming to work and, and are working with our young students. So, that has been a real plus for us.
We have, the benefit has been, rather than having it being targeted at, you know, a specific group of students that require academic intervention, it's something that's open to anybody. We designed the program so that way, it's not sequential, where a student could go, come in for week one, go away on vacation for week two, and return back into the program, because they don't have to feel like they missed a week worth of instruction. Um, we have quite a few of our remote-only students who did not step foot in our schools during the school year, who, you know, were hoping for a, a more traditional opening for the school year. It's an opportunity for them to re-assimilate to, back to school for hopefully, a, a September return to in-person instruction. So, um, on many levels, certainly on the academic side, but also on the social-emotional side, um, I, I think it's been a positive.
It has. And so, these are some of the things. Just, just to go back to the requirements, I said there's guidelines. One of the guidelines is that the districts would have to post on their website what they were using their money. So, of course, I wanted to just put this slide up again. Um, it was not only posted on our website, but I believe Photo News took our posting and posted in their, in their paper and shared with the community. So, I felt it would be appropriate to sort of talk again about some of the things. We, Chromebooks and iPads, obviously, we use them a lot during our remote time. Uh, infrastructure technology work. One of the things that we're looking to do is also, which is an allowable expenditure, is enhance our air filtration. As we talk about students coming back to school, making sure the air is purified. And then, I, I put in there universal pre-K, because there is going to be a cost, and we believe that this cost, we could, um, use it through our ARAMoney. So, when we received this money and we knew what it was for, um, we started thinking about, so what can we do? Obviously, Dr. Hasser talked about summer bridges and all the other things, but what can we do long-term? And I found this quote from the American Academy of Pediatrics that read that, "The COVID-nineteen pandemic has created profound challenges for our communities, families, and individuals, leading to a range of emotional and behavioral responses. There are many factors unique to this pandemic. Grief, loss, uncertainty, rapidly changing and conflicting messages, duration of the crisis, and need for quarantine, which many of our students and teachers had to endure this past year. That increased its effect on emotional and behavioral health." So, as we talk about returning our students to school, we started to think about, what are some of the things that we can do as a district to support those needs? And we took a look at our guidance counselors. In specific, I want to share with you our guidance counselors at the high school. So, if you take a look at that chart, Monroe Woodbury has a ratio of two-hundred-and-ninety uh, students to each counselor. That is extremely, extremely high. When you look at the other school districts, they range from two-eighty to two-hundred. And I think that when you talk about the needs of our students as they return, it's going to be incredibly important to have that, um, social-emotional support, um, have those, uh, school psychologists, have those school counselors. So, I will be recommending that we have, uh, an additional one-point-oh guidance counselor at the high school. If, in fact, you know, when we do that, our ratio will be anywhere between two-forty and two, two-fifty, which I think is, is manageable. So, they'll have, uh, a significant decrease, again, as we bring these students back to school. So, what we're going to have is, we're going to have a high school guidance counselor. We're going to have two, uh, school psychologists. And we went back and forth. Do we get a social worker, or do we get a psychologist?
We also, just to, to interrupt, the two people that we're going to be recommending for the psychologist position are here tonight.
Oh, they are.
So, no pressure.
We're, we're, we're talking about it as we speak.
So, we, so, instead of waiting for the personnel section, we do have Kristen Chiriani, who's going to be at the middle school secondary, and Mary Everling, who's going to be at the elementary.
Welcome. Well, thank you.
Nice.
Um, so, again, um, these, the reason we went with a psychologist is because psychologists are able to assess and, and do specific testing. Um, and so, that's why we made the recommendation. The last recommendation is a director of guidance. We have, um, a premier high school. And a premier high school should have a director of guidance. And a director of guidance can be able to manage and really shepherd our, uh, guidance department into an era where we're going to support our students and make sure that they get into the colleges and pathways that they choose, to make sure that we, um, update our Navions program, to make sure that, uh, college-ready students, you know, are met with on an, on a week, on, I'm sorry, on a, at least monthly, to, to monthly basis. And so, by increasing our guidance counselors and having a director of guidance, we can make that move in our guidance department. Any questions?
Anybody have questions?
Anybody have questions?
Is that more, when you're referring to the guidance counselors and that approach with college, are there other proactive kind of actions that they take? Everything regarding COVID and coming back to school, is there like a proactive plan in place, or is it really based on a student going to them when they have an issue?
So, so, there is a proactive plan. One of the things that we have is we have, and I have, Ms. Ricker is here, and so is Karen Jordan. So, we talk about, what are the things that we can do to outreach? Because I think the big thing is, how do you outreach to these, to these students? And we've, we've done a lot of that. We've made house visits, we've reached out to families, we've provided them with resources. That's part of the plan, but I, I believe so, I believe that when we bring our students back, that's only gonna increase. Remember, we didn't have our full 200, 2,400 students at the high school. Our goal and our hope is that our students will be back in our building, and so, when they come back to the building, we all need to be prepared. So, there is, there is a plan, and I think that part of that will be the outreach, making sure that we touch base with students, we work with them, we find out what's going on at home. And those are the things that we really need to be more proactive. Looking at student, I think one of the things that, that Mr. V, Dr. V has talked about is data, right? Looking at the data and telling us, what's the story, what's this data telling us? What's the story with the student? And what do we need to look at? Because sometimes, students are in crisis and you don't know it, right? They're, they're quiet. And we have students like that. But what you do see is a dip in their academics. And so, there has to be systems in place that say, when a student drops, or when we're seeing that a student is not performing to their ability, that we reach out to them and find out why. So, these are some of the things that we, we will do, and, and we have been doing, but I think with an additional counselor, we have more outreach.
And I think one of the things that we're doing now is sort of reviewing what has taken, what has transpired over the last 16, 18 months, and what are some of our takeaways of what we've done? I think one of the challenges has been finding ways to be able to engage kids, particularly the kids that are remote. And how do we, you know, we realize that we were very reliant on in-person strategies, student walking into the guidance office, guidance counselor not being available, leaving a note and putting it in an envelope, and, you know, waiting a couple of days for the guidance counselor to reach out to them. I think that we've found a lot of non-traditional ways for kids to be able to remotely get in contact and communicate with their guidance counselor, and not necessarily be reliant on some of that in-person connectivity. And, and so, I think one of the steps that we're looking to take is to continue to build on that. You know, how can we increase communication between the counselors and the students in some of those non-traditional ways, rather than just, I gotta make, you know, walking into the guidance office, trying to find time on the counselor's schedule from the secretary that's there, that might be a week or two down the road for them to be able to connect?
Yeah. I think we have a saying, putting eyes on our children, which is hard to do when they're on a, on a screen. And, and I think that when we welcome them back, we have to have a lot of eyes on them and make sure that they're okay, right? And, and that relationship between our counselors and our parents and our families to give us a heads-up is also going to be important. So, building those relationships with families. And we have, we've had some students that haven't been in our building for over a year. So, this is gonna be a big transition for them. So, preparing for that transition, as you said, we have to prepare for the transition and the anxiety that comes with going back into a building that you haven't been in for over a year.
And the expectation is that the director of guidance is gonna own that and all the connections?
Correct. Yeah.
I mean, what can you imagine, that's a certain, you can have well-performing kids who are overstressed and are hiding it. Is there a system of maybe some kind of screening questionnaire or validated questions that could be just disseminated amongst kids? I mean, they may not want to talk early on, but if reached out in such a way, and this could be three, four questions where you could ask, hey, how do you feel?
Right. I think we do, there are surveys, but I think one of the most important takeaways is the relationship between our students and our, and our staff, right? There has to be that relationship. I was a high school teacher for, before I became an administrator, and it's building that relationship with students so that you know, sometimes, as a parent, I can tell you when my kids were, came in through the door, I could say, was it a good day or a bad day? And they didn't say one word. So, I think it's building that relationship to know your students well enough to say, I'm concerned about Sergey, he, he has not been himself, he's been awfully quiet, and maybe having a counselor reach out to them. Those are the things that are really important.
But teachers are also stressed.
You're, that, you are 100%.
Sixteen-month hiatus where they had to work overtime and change what they have done for years and years and years, and they may not have their, their own coping mechanisms in place.
So, that is the work that we've been doing as well. I mean, what, what we've heard and what, what has been said is that this pandemic has been a trauma that 99.9% of the people have suffered. Whether, and so, we have to be prepared to bring back, right? Because schools have to be a safe place. And so, how do we create that, not just for our students, but for our staff as well?
And one of the, one of the terms that I used earlier was academic intervention. And, and the traditional model of academic intervention is essentially if, if a staff member notices a decline in student performance, I mean, we have a whole process about referring them to a team that looks at the student performance and things like that. And, and it's very academically driven, you know? You're, you're waiting to see some sort of like, you know, shift in student performance. And, and we're moving to a, an MTSS model, a multi-tier system of, of support service. And, and, and that's more behaviorally driven, where, you know, it may not necessarily be something where, you know, the student has to demonstrate that there's a dip, it, it may be the change in the demeanor of a student, the, you know, the appearance of a student, that, that, something that a, a, a peer may be reporting to a staff member. So, it, it's kind of that shift of purely moving away from an academic perspective to be inclusive of the behavioral aspect as well.
Right. And just so that you know, we call that an IST, an instructional support team. So, every building has an IST team that sits and talks about. So, this MTSS is going to be a change, because normally, the IST team would run solely on the academics. You know, how is Sergey doing? You know, what are his grades? He's doing well, and you move on. This is not. This is, how is Sergey doing? What are his behaviors? What are your concern? Attendance is another piece that we see. Students who normally come to school regularly are not now coming to school.
Disciplinary.
You know, discipline, a student who never had a discipline, all of a sudden, we see the discipline. And so, there's lots of factors that really-
Is it easy for a teacher to, to highlight that, to communicate that? Or is it complicated?
We're, we're in the process of shifting, like, right now, we have a very specific procedure with forms about, I'm, I'm referring a student to the IST team, and they complete a form, and it's largely data-driven based upon academics. And we're, we're in the process right now of shifting that, those forms and training the staff on, here are some of the things that you might look for, here's the procedure that you should be using, and what the buildings are doing, who is, you know, there's an expansion of the individuals that are on the team, you know? It might not just be purely academically driven, it's also going to be a counselor, a psychologist, speech OTPT that might be there, a nurse-
A nurse.
-that, that is gonna be participating in these, these teams to be able to provide support to the staff that are identifying some of the, the issues that have been identified in some, in the kids.
But I wanna go back to two years ago. Two years ago, the district made a commitment to helping our, our school psychologists, our counselors, and our teachers to look for those signs and symptoms. But you're right, everybody is taxed, and we're hoping that this summer break will help people kind of regain, but, but that doesn't change it, right? People have been away from school and coming back into the buildings, and there is a sense of anxiety. Our role is to create an environment where people, A, feel comfortable, and B, have the support systems in, in, in place. And that's why I think these additional staff members will help us do that.
I would also look at the student after-school activities where kids are usually the best monitors of what happens to my buddy or-
100%.
Yeah. So, a feedback from that, that would probably be very instrumental to this as well.
Right. And, and coaches, right? So, when our students leave our buildings and go to, to an activity, let's just say it's a sport or an after-school activity, these people are also in contact. So, it's, I go back to the saying, eyes on our children. The more eyes on our children, the better you can tell that something may not be right.
Yeah. Also, kids who were previously very involved or had a social group, now are isolating, that, that's another flag. I do have another question, though, and it's from something Sergey brought up. Are we doing anything for the emotional support of our staff?
Yes.
Good.
We, we, we started that last year, right? We talk about, what are your needs? And we, we did some professional development with them. We're, we're reminding them that it's important for them to take time. Even this, the beginning of this year, I met with the, the teachers to say, how are we gonna start this year? Let's start this year slow. Let's not put a lot on our teachers, because of course, we want them to be ready to support our, our students. So, it's really important to take this one step at a time. So, we're looking at, what are the first two days of school? Because remember, we're starting school August 30th. The children come back in September, but our teachers will be back two days. So, looking at what those days will look like, and speaking to the teachers, their one thing was, please don't pack my day in with lots of other things, because I want to be able to come in and prepare my, my room and my, my, my work for my students.
And that was part of the logic at the beginning of last school year, where we started the school year off at four superintendent conference days, we started the school year off remote with the abbreviated schedule, where, you know, we had so many different factors that were contributing to what's online instruction going to look like. We started the remote synchronous schedule, the live synchronous streaming schedule. There were so many different factors that were contributing to that, and I think that a lot of those elements were part of the decision-making behind that schedule at the beginning of the school year.
And that mindset was also evident over the, well, just a couple of weeks ago with the administrative team. So, typically, we have our administrative retreat, we bring in an outside speaker, or, and this year, we focused just on, well, it was really just us. And it was an opportunity for us to say, okay, let's, you know, dig a little deeper into how your experience was this past year, and almost, almost kind of honor the experience so that we could then, you know, not move past it, but, you know, craft our goals and vision for, for this coming year.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Any questions?
Anybody else? I'm sorry. Everybody's good? Thank you.
Number nine on the agenda, may I have a motion to approve the minutes of the July 6, 2021 Annual Organizational Meeting?
I motion.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Approval of the revised 2021-2022 Board of Education meeting schedule, I referenced this earlier, we will be altering our meeting date in the month of August. We will now be meeting on Wednesday, August 25th, instead of the August 18th. So, that is what the motion is for, to approve that adjustment.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Committee reports, I'm not sure that there's been too much going on, but Dawn, anything for facilities and audit?
No.
Okay. I'll do for policy. I, I think the only update that I will share, and I, I haven't checked, honestly, but I have to double-check with Donna, is we did meet at the end of the year, all of the committees, and we put together a rough draft of meeting dates. So, if those are not up on the website yet, hopefully, they will be. So, all of our audit meetings, policy meetings, visitation, and facilities meetings have been pre-scheduled. We're hoping to kind of do that, not only for our schedules, but also for administrators and the other staff that have to attend. Those meetings are always open to the public. If you wish to attend, please reach out to Ms. Vitucci, but I think they might be posted. If not yet, then they will be.
They are on the homepage calendar.
They are. Okay. So, those are up there. So, other than that, we will have our next policy meeting coming up accordingly. I don't think there was anything else from visitation, Dawn, correct? I think we just have our schedule. I don't think there's anything specific.
Right. I was just gonna talk about the Summer Bridges Program, but you, please, so, you know, when you speak.
Absolutely. Okay, thank you. Okay, so, that's it for committee reports. Matt, for personnel?
So, I was gonna introduce Kristin and Mary at this, this part, but-
It's already done.
It's already done, so, awesome. No, there, there are a couple of things listed, including memorandums of agreement for, between the district and the MWAA, which is the Administrators Association, the CSCA, which are bus drivers and our buildings and maintenance staff members, and our non-bargaining staff as well. So, with that, I respectfully request approval for the items listed under personnel.
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'm gonna, I'm gonna keep it with Matt, since Patrick is out of town this evening.
That's right. That's how we roll.
He'll give us an update for financial.
No, I respectfully request approval for the items listed under, under business. I can't answer any of your questions about them, but if you could approve them, that'd be great.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. May I have a motion to adopt the recommendations on the Committee on Special Education, 14.1 through, I believe-
14.4.
14.4.
Motion. I motion.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Reports by board and central office, Sergey?
I'd like to thank the administration for your continued efforts in improving this district. It's summertime, everybody is relaxed and wearing their shorts, but you guys are working. Thank you for that. And I would like to thank people who came out here today to voice their opinions about the subjects. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll, I'll speak on behalf of Dawn when I go around. Dawn?
The same. I'd like to thank the people who got up and spoke today, who really appreciate it. That's it for me.
Thank you. Suzanne?
Yeah, I'd like to thank people who got up and voiced their opinions, and also thank everyone who presented, and especially the update on the universal pre-K. I think that's gonna be an awesome program. And enjoy the rest of the summer.
Thank you. Donna?
Just wanted to thank everyone for coming out tonight and wish a certain superintendent of schools a very happy birthday in two days.
Happy birthday.
Another year older.
Yeah. Not today.
It's wrong.
So, believe it or not, we are getting ready for September. One of the things, one of the tasks that we will, we are doing in, in next four days, starting tomorrow, is distribution of the devices. So, if you are incoming K or second-grade parents, you should have received the communication from the district. Please sign up on a, on a pick-a-time slot. We will be distributing close to 650 devices in next four days.
Thank you. Eric?
Just a, a quick congratulations to everybody who was appointed this evening. You're, you're joining an outstanding school district. It's definitely, it's, it's been a busy summer. I spoke at the July 6 meeting about, you know, the starting of summer school, the starting of summer crusaders, and still speaking abstractly about Summer Bridges because it hadn't started yet, but the fact that our schools have over 1,000 kids still in the buildings every single day between the three programs is, is truly remarkable. You know, I've spent quite a bit of time bouncing around between the programs, and I, I can't tell you how proud I am of everybody, the building administration, all of the staff, everybody that has been involved in the development. I'm sorry if I'm taking away from your-
No.
It's, 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 it's a very, very impressive, impressive thing, and hopefully, everybody feels similarly about, you know, the experiences that they've, they've had in the program. So, thank you. I'm also elated to be able to develop this UPK program. It, it is something, I think, that is going to have tremendous positive effects for our kids entering our school district. If you look at the research about providing early intervention for kids in a UPK program, to have kids coming into kindergarten K-ready with the word recognition and, and all of the things that go along with it, I think is a huge opportunity for our kids, and I'm really, really excited about the opportunity to be able to develop it. So, looking forward to it. Thanks.
Thank you. Matt?
And I think one of the best things about, for me, with the summer programs, was just the opportunity to sit with so many young people who are excited and, and willing to work with our, our younger kids. What I should have done under the business section is to say thank you to a couple of people. The high school and Smith-Clove are the recipients of some donations. High school is receiving a donation of $750 from the Special Olympics of New York for the Unified Champion School Program for Inclusive Sports, as well as $16 from New York Life for MW Cares. And Smith-Clove is receiving $191.47 from the Stop &amp; Shop A+ School Rewards Program. So, thank you to all of them. That's it.
Thank you. Jamel?
First, I'd say, when it comes to the UPK, I'm actually kind of really proud to hear that little pals got in there. My, both my daughters went there, and my second one's is leaving this year, it's a little sad. But they're a great organization, there's great people, great, great teachers. Angela has given us a lot of support over the years. And anyone that does, get the opportunity to get your child in there, I'm sorry to say, but they're blessed. It's a great place. And I look forward to seeing more from the Summer Bridges organization, starting tomorrow.
Yeah? Okay, great. Dan?
Have a good night.
Anthony?
Welcome to the new members of our district. Thanks to the community members that came out to bring up and talk about a very important subject. And of course, I know people are watching, you know, that's why I shave my head every week. You guys get a beautiful version of me, so. Have a happy summer, rest of the summer, and good evening.
Thank you. Michael?
I want to thank the administration for all the work on the goals and the effort that went in there. I wanna also reiterate that I really love the presentation on the UPK. Very excited about that. And I also really want to thank the community members that got up and spoke tonight. We appreciate you taking the time to sit here and provide your feedback. And I wish everyone the rest of a safe and healthy summer. Thank you.
Thank you. I also want to thank the speakers that got up to speak. Oh, I'm sorry, I always do that. I always say she, you should go last, and it's your birthday.
Yeah, you go. Go ahead.
Yeah, I'll go la, you go last. I, too, want to thank the speakers, and we do appreciate their feedback. I know that sometimes getting up here and speaking isn't always conducive for time purposes. I do encourage you to send emails. All of our email addresses are listed on the website, along with the superintendents. We do respond. So I please encourage you, if you felt that there was something that you didn't get the opportunity to say, I apologize for cutting anybody off, the three minutes is the three minutes, but please feel free to reach out via email, and somebody will respond to you. So I do appreciate that. I want to thank for the presentations. I know there's a lot of work that went into that, and it was very last minute, because as with typical New York State, we found out and that we're going to implement this program, but I'm excited for it. I know Mrs. Caldwell is very excited for it, so it should be a great undertaking, I appreciate it. Dawn and I were able to attend a few of the schools last week to witness some of the Summer Bridges program in action, and it's phenomenal. I mean, again, for something that was thrown together at the very last minute with the resources that we had, it was amazing. The kids were, the first question that I asked all the kids was where they were happy, and everybody was. I thought one kid said that they weren't, but I misunderstood him. Everybody is so happy to be there. So they're doing great things there. They have, what Dr. Huster mentioned earlier, it's not just academics, they also get to go outside for recess, they have art class, they have PE, so they have music, it's wonderful. And one of the best parts that Mrs. Rodriguez mentioned was we got to see some of our kids in action. And upon talking to some of these teachers that are in this classroom now that are our students, it's phenomenal. Some of them are seniors that just recently graduated in June, they're going to school to become an art major or to study music, and now here they are, teaching our younger kids in the summer program. And they have mentors, our staff is their mentor. So I just thought that was amazing, I encourage that for next year, because I'm understanding correctly that we'll be doing the same program next year, so hopefully, more students will even apply. Tomorrow, Jamel and I will be going for those schools that we didn't get to, be prepared, we'll come tomorrow to, I think, North Main, the middle school and the high school. So we'll be over there to see you guys tomorrow. Thanks to all the new hires, I welcome everybody and wish you all the best. I want to wish Mrs. Rodriguez a very wonderful birthday.
Thank you.
And thank you so much.
Thank you.
Want to pass it to you.
Thank you. So I want to take a moment to say that one of the things that's great about this country is democracy. And democracy allows people to get up and speak and voice their opinion. And so I want to thank you for getting up and doing that, because that's what this country is founded on. I'm an ex-social studies teacher, I shouldn't say ex, I'm a former social studies teacher, so I understand the importance of voicing your opinion, and we are always looking to[1696.76]